Here.
Riley.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Mieski.
Present.
Caravello.
Here.
Jensen.
I'm here.
I'm here.
O'Connor.
Here.
Duransek.
Here.
And Alders, Weesinger, and Forsmore, absent in excuse.
Okay, thank you. Are there any communications tonight from anybody? Alder Person, Duransek?
Yes, I just wanted to thank you for kind of your summary of what's been going on and what is kind of still up in the air. I really appreciated kind of getting an update from you, the mayor. I understand that the school board will be making a presentation in the future. I wish that we would have kind of a heads up, you know, several weeks so that if there are specific questions that we would like them to address, that we could, you know, kind of maybe funnel those questions through you to whoever's going to come and make the presentation. Because I think that, you know, we all have, you know, you know, gaps in our knowledge, so to speak, of the school district, so.
Okay, thank you. I'll try to get a date commitment and pass that along so you can formulate your questions. Alder Person, Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to give a big shout out to Clerk Holly, her staff, and all of the poll workers for a great job on Tuesday. It was just a yeoman's job, and I know for a fact that most of them were there for pretty much, what, sixteen, seventeen hours? You know, so I mean, that is a yeoman's job, and a job well done, and I thank you very much.
You're here.
Holly's still in recovery mode.
Yeah, I guess so.
Is there any other communications? Did you have anything you wanted to communicate? Okay, all right, no other communications. So we'll go to presentations, and we're going to have two this evening. And the first one will be from the RDA, and who gets to present tonight?
Both of us, we're sharing the fun.
Oh, your tag teaming. All right. Hey, Roger.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and Council Chair Mieski for letting us come before you tonight. As you know, we made a commitment earlier this year to come before you with regular updates, and we are going to be doing so tonight. And Gary, in a few minutes, will come up and give you the more specifics than I will. I'm just doing some background here. The RDA has made considerable progress in spring, getting the site prepared for development. And I believe you're going to be as excited as we are about our progress, and so it's a really great moment for the city. And I hope, as you hear Gary talk in a few minutes and see the progress and the plans for the future, you're going to see that we're really going to be going forward with some gusto and some desire to make this as best of a project as it can be. But before I do that, I want to say one more thing. I am very proud of our RDA and its commitment, creativity, and energy. You've heard me say that before, my previous time before you, when I've said, made these updates a couple of times. And I really want to emphasize that because without the great RDA that we have this time, I don't think we would be where we are. So I want to thank each member for its dedication to our collective goals. And without it being overly said, each one of them is making a difference for our future, and I'm so proud of them and proud of our progress. I also see that the blacksmith shop is on the agenda tonight, and I think what I'll do is I'll just hang around until the, I think it's the last item, and answer any questions at that time, or if you want me to make any comments at the blacksmith shop, I'll do that right at the end of your agenda tonight then. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Gary to give us a layout of the future.
All right.
Thank you, Gary.
Thanks, Roger. So as Roger said, we've got quite a bit of heavy lifting done over the summer and this fall. If you're going to go to the next slide, not the least of which is demolition on the mill fab site has been completed, as well as the, most of the highway trailer building, excepting the blacksmith shop. So it's nice that the site, all the buildings are down there. The photo in the lower right-hand corner is a, from a drone video that Jim Baldoff flew for us. So we've got some new drone video of the site. So it's looking good, with those buildings down. The DNR was out there on the site, conducting their Phase Two investigation, and they're currently working on their report and the soils management plan for the property to deal with the contaminated soil. You'll be talking about the blacksmith shop a little later in the meeting. Another big heavy lift is the TID eight, or the whole TID restructure is completed. So the basier package for both TID eight and the TID five amendment have been submitted to the Department of Revenue, and they're currently reviewing that. We should hear, probably take another four to six weeks for them to give us the certification. And the current thing we're working on now, we've, we're starting to, well, let me back up a little bit. Couple of weeks ago, we had the statewide planners conference in Madison. And at that meeting, I was talking to Jason Gilman, who's the planning director for the city of La Crosse. I've known Jason for quite a long time. And he was telling me about the, this process they had just gone through in La Crosse to select a developer for a riverfront development that they have. And they used something that's pretty new, or that hasn't been used very much in Wisconsin, and that's a request for expression of interest. And that's a process where it's similar to a request for proposal, except you're not really looking for proposals. You're just looking for developers who are interested in looking at the site and talking to you about developing it. And then, once you have interested developers, then you go through a screening process with them. That, it's a lot easier than all those developers each putting a proposal together, because that process, right away, weans out a lot of developers. So we're pretty excited about this approach. So we held a conference call with Jason last week and got some, asked quite a few questions, and he explained how the process worked. So the RDA is working on developing their own RFEI. And so if you go to the next slide, that's on the top of our next steps list. So we'll be talking about that at tomorrow night's meeting, and we're targeting having that completed by late January. We're also getting to a point where it's time to start thinking about an RFP for design services for riverbank improvements and the Riverwalk Trail design. So we'll be talking about that in, over the next couple of months. We're working on an application to conduct a Phase Two environmental assessment on the highway trailer building. Now that that building is down, we expect to get that submitted in a couple of weeks. We're also working on trying to find funding for the demolition of the Public Works Building. And we're, we've been, currently, Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation is evaluating whether the site would be eligible for a site assessment grant. We received a site assessment grant to tear down the buildings on the Mill Fab property. It could work for, potentially, it could work for the Public Works site. However, there's some issues with the city's ownership of the property, and at what point did the city own the property when certain things were on the site? And so that's what they're digging into, and we're needing to find, understand the relationship between Stoughton Light and Fuel Company, and whether there's any, if they were a predecessor to Stoughton Utilities. There was a substation on the property that, at a time when they contained PCB oils. And so, you know, if that was owned by Stoughton Utilities, then there are some eligibility issues. So there's a number of things we're trying to work through, and I'm not sure, I'm not having a good feeling about the outcome of the eligibility for that. But we should get a determination probably within a week or two. And that's what, that's on our, what's on our immediate, immediate list. So we're, we're hoping that the RFEI process will unfold over the spring. And by some point in early summer, we've got at least a short list of developers. So that's kind of the timeframe that we're working off of now. Be happy to answer any questions. So there's another shot of the blacksmith shop from the drone.
Gary, just to elaborate a little bit, just want to make one comment about the RFEI process. Before Gary just fortuitously fell into the opportunity to visit with his colleague, Jason, the RDA been looking for a new way to bring developers to the city, because we felt like what was done a couple of years ago was okay, but we understood that the RFP process is very demanding, both on the applicant, or applicants, and also the city to make sure it has whole act together before you do an RFP. So we said, is there a better way to do this? So before Gary ran into this gentleman that he knew for years and years, we said, is there a way we can build a relationship with a developer so that we can march along together, learn from each other's needs and experiences, and also develop a trust and kind of heartfelt relationship so we knew they were good for us and we were good for them? So it's a way, then, to bridge the gap between an effective communication need and a need to get some work done, both on their part to make some money, and our part to have this work for the community. So without overplaying the importance of the RFEI process, this is a way, it's a door opener to bring developers in. And just to back up what Gary said momentarily, they sent it out to 100 developers in the region, as I recall, Chicago to Minneapolis. They got 100 responses, I shouldn't say not 100 responses, they sent out to 100 folks, 100 developers, they got 17 responses. So it's really formed a great basis then for La Crosse to really start to mull out each company's interest in their city, and if this is a company we can work with. And we really expect that's going to happen here. We expect we're going to get maybe five to 10 applicants possibly, and that'll give us a good chance to really look at the credentials of each entity, and also to develop a relationship with them. So when we sit down together and negotiate, we're both going to do it with a common goal of making this project the best it can be for each party. So that's why we like the RFEI process. I hope that makes sense. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions I can answer? Yes, I, all right, thank you very much for the update. All right. And then with, the next presentation would be the general election update, and our clerk would like to do that for you.
Sure, so I was just asked to give some statistics regarding the general election. So on November 6th, we had 6,749 voters, which is an 80% turnout citywide. To give you some perspective on that, in 2016, we had 83% turnout for the presidential election. The last midterm election in 2014, there was 71% turnout, and then 2010, 68% turnout. So significant increase in voter turnout in, since the last midterm elections. 23% of those who voted in the city voted by absentee ballot, which is a substantial increase. It's not as many as we had in the presidential election, but still more than we had in 2014.
Do you know how many newly registered voters?
So we registered around 600 people on Election Day. But that, some of those people had lived elsewhere in the city, so they were just moving from within the city. I don't believe that we really have a way of measuring actual new voters, but around 60, or 600 people did register on Election Day.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
We also had extended hours on a couple nights. Do you remember what the numbers were on that?
Yes, so the last week of absentee voting, we were open. Normally, our normal hours are 7:30 until 4:30, our regular business hours for absentee voting. The last week of absentee voting, we had hours of 7:30 till 6:00 p.m. And we, every night, we had around 20, 15 to 20 voters come in in that additional two-hour span.
Alder Person, Jensen, did you have a question?
Holly, did you have any notable issues with voting?
Greg, can you speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry, did you have any notable issues?
We didn't have anything out of the ordinary on Election Day. Right away, we had a pretty big line, right away, at seven o'clock in the morning, but that happens everywhere. I think we were able to get through it in a timely manner. I think the most anyone waited was probably 25 minutes, and that was, they showed up like right around 7:00 to 7:15. We had people starting the line at 6:20, and the polls don't open until seven o'clock. So when people are getting there that early, the line is to be expected.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is our public comment period. And I don't see anybody signed up, but that doesn't mean you can't come up and let us know if you have any questions or concerns, or anything you want to share with the council this evening. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to come up? Seeing none, we'll go on to the consent agenda, and we'll be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. A motion by Duransek and a second by Jensen. Would anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. The next item would be the public hearing for the City of Stoughton operating budget. And you want to do a presentation first and then go into the hearing, or?
Well, this, this item actually, not entirely sure what it is. It's referring to this notice of public budget hearing, which is actually what we published prior to the actual committee of the whole meetings. So unless anybody has any questions on this, we'll move on through the agenda. There's no action that needs to be taken on it or anything. This was just the document that was published for the draft budget.
So we have it posted as a public hearing. Should we go ahead and close and then open for that? And we'll do that. So we'll close the regular meeting, and then we'll reopen as a public hearing. So if anybody would like to speak to the budget, now would be the time to do it. Otherwise, we'll be going through some information. Anybody interested in doing that? I don't see any, so we'll just close the public hearing, and then we'll reopen for old business. And that would be ordinance 24 of 2018, which is coming from the Planning Commission. That would be Alder Person Bartlett.
Okay, from the Planning Commission, bring forth ordinance 24 of 2018, repealing section 78-913, repealing and recreating section 78-517 of the Stoughton Municipal Code, and I move to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second.
And this is the second reading. This is the ordinance dealing with the downtime design overlay district. That's intended to preserve and enhance the aesthetic qualities. It was just updated and clarified for a number of points. I think Attorney Dregney and Todd Barman on the Planning Commission did a lot of work on this, and the staff, Rodney did a lot as well. If you'd like any comments, Rodney, or?
Certainly, the commission, and particularly Mr. Barman on our commission, spent a great deal of time trying to work with city staff and the city attorney to try to reconcile some architectural design questions and issues. So we're very comfortable with the document and hopeful that it'll serve us well going forward.
Any questions on chapter 78? It's been a long process. It started out with, you know, the building downtown and the moratoriums, and it went from there to landmarks, and eventually made its way to the Planning Commission, and we're here at council this evening. And I like, I think it's good the way it is. I think we streamlined it. I think it's easy to understand, and hopefully, it should serve us well for a long time. So don't see any questions. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That carries. Next item is R 183 of 2018, and that went through utilities and the CIP, and I think President Mieski would introduce this one.
We are authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the Stoughton Utilities 2019 budget and five-year 2019 through 2023 capital improvement plan, CIP. Utilities CIP approved unanimously.
Second.
And there's a second. Any discussion on this one?
Nope.
Otherwise, do you have something you want to share with this, Jamin, or?
Not unless anybody has any questions. Just one clarification on the actual agenda item. This went through Utilities Committee and then Finance Committee, then actually come to the City CIP Committee. We kind of expedited it, so Bob Cardass could be at the meeting that we went through the second time.
Unless anybody has any questions on the presentation that's attached to the resolution, we can certainly move on.
I don't see any questions, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That brings us to Resolution 184 of 2018, and that comes from the Committee of the Whole. President Mieski.
Committee of the Whole presents R 184 of 2018, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to adopt the 2019 City of Stoughton budget. Committee of the Whole recommended approval at 11 to 0, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, and a second by Hirsch. Any questions or comments on this one before we get started?
Nope.
The Finance Committee met this evening, and there was some money that had not been allocated, and so we have a recommendation on the TIF number three, $171,304. So when that comes up, I can move the Finance Committee's recommendation.
So that'll be an amendment?
That will be an amendment.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so we went through the Committee of the Whole meetings. A lot of this information's pretty similar to what we talked about at the last November 1st meeting, and also at the first October 18th meeting. Oh, sorry. So I, we'll go through it pretty quickly. If anybody has any questions, just go ahead, raise your hand, and I'd be happy to answer them. But with that, this is the 2019 City of Stoughton operating budget. So again, some driving factors here were the compensation plan adjusted at 3%. We did see a health insurance increase over 2018 of 5.95%. That also included the addition of four tiers, so now we have family, individual plus spouse, spouse, individual plus children, and then single-family plans now. The debt service increase was $451,331. That's actually levied for. That's compared to about $310,000 in 2018. Net new construction was 1.59%. That equated to about $113,000 in increased revenue. The state road allotment increased by $160,000, and then the water and electric utility pilot increased by $95,000. So those were the biggest driving factors in terms of where we ended up in the budget. Again, we showed this at the first meeting, just a little historical perspective for folks that haven't been through this process. You know, it's a moving target. We go through the budget process, but you can see some of the numbers here. You know, it goes 15, 16, 17. These are actual numbers, and you can see where we're at in terms of revenue. So we tend to budget a little bit conservatively on the revenue side. You can see we're actually 286,000 over in 15, 184 in 16, and 429,000 in 17. Again, same thing with expenditures. We're a little bit over in 15, way under in 16, and then over again in 17. So again, it just kind of reflects the nature of the budgeting. It's a moving target. Things do change throughout the year, but overall, we've seen really significant changes in the overall fund balance. So what this told me was I could get a little more aggressive in terms of budgeting based on past practices to see if we could squeeze in like the 3% increase and things like that. So any questions on past practices at all? Okay, I know some of this is pretty hard to read, but we've been through it a couple of times. This just kind of touches on the big changes to the revenue. This is a general fund revenue summary here. You see, I basically moved this, or ordered this in terms of the biggest changes in the actual budget itself. So you can see the biggest change is the property tax levy, $525,000. $451,000 of that was debt service, and then the $73,000 was the net new construction. State road allotment, we did receive the preliminary amount from the DOT, and that increased by about $161,000. Utility pilot increased by $95,000. This includes water and electric as well. You can see the utilities are contributing about $915,000 to the overall budget, pretty significant amount. This has to do with the West Sub, Substation, and then a fair amount of SCADA work that Brian Hoops has been working on. And again, the way this has been budgeted in the past, they were actually a year behind in the budget process on this. So that's why we're seeing a big jump in $95,000. So this is kind of a one-time yay for us. It's going to kind of disappear in 20, and we'll kind of see some normal increases then in 2020. Interest income, you can see we increased that by about $60,000. I have a note there. Wisk is just one of the financial institutions that we use. You can see over the last three years, we've been running about an average of $6.5 million in there. This actually is based on forecasting a 1% return on our investments, and Wisk is actually approaching closer to 2% at this point in time. So even though we increased it, it's still a pretty conservative analysis. Year-to-date, I just looked before we came to the meeting, we're actually at $128,000 in interest income for the year. So again, we need to take a conservative approach at interest, but I know we're going to see some more revenue there than we've historically budgeted. You know, $128,000 compared to $30,000 budgeted at this point. Taxi grant, you can see that's increasing by $50,000. The actual 18 amount will be amended at the next Finance Committee meeting. This is kind of a shot in the dark. We don't actually know the numbers until the end of the year, but we know that we're approaching closer to the $200,000 mark for 18, so 19 should be pretty similar to that as well. Personal property aid, that's $40,000. This is new in 2019. And then the other ones, donations by the police department, we just budgeted closer to reflect the historical amounts. And then we see a $10,000 transfer in from TIF III. All other general fund revenue, the changes account for $2,200. So any changes in the, any questions on the revenue? Wages, we'll just touch on very quickly. You can see overall, we're predicting about a 5.36% increase in wages. That includes the 3% increase, but then we also budget certain things like wages for the volunteers for the fire department and EMS departments. We budget those at full capacity. Even though they're not actually at full capacity, we budget it so that, so we do have that capacity to get more volunteers in. You can see we increased overtime for the police department by about $39,000. Again, that's to reflect more of the historical values. You can see across the board, we've been at 130, $134,000, $185,000, and $166,000. So we increased that budgeted amount by a little bit. Salaries, you can see we increased by about $87,000. This is because the clerk position changed the salary throughout the year, and then obviously, the restructure within the finance department was a hit as well. Other than that, you can see the wages, that's another big jump, about $106,000. That's at that 3% mark to be expected with a 3% increase in wages. And then we see some wages part-time that increased, $33,000. Again, this is due partly to Public Works, and that's a position that's actually on staff right now that wasn't budgeted for 18, so we're seeing that increase come through in 19. And then the library, we took a really hard look at their wages in 19, and we think they were budgeted a little bit light in 18. So that's why we're seeing a little bit of increase there as well. So any questions on the wages? And I show this because it's such a big part of our budget, so. Benefits, you can see, we're actually planning a decrease in this. Reasons for that is we eliminated $50,000 in the General Government Department for self-insured losses. That's not really an employee benefit. It's still budgeted. It's just not showing as an employee benefit. We did budget $23,000 last year for income continuation. We're actually paying no premium on that, so we're not going to budget for it for 19. And then we did see a decrease in the WRS rates this year as well. And then you have the health and dental summary. I do have a note there, see discussion below. I didn't include it. This looks a little different, because we're only seeing an increase of $115, $15. Again, we went through this with a fine-tooth comb, myself, AJ. We looked at this over and over, and these numbers seemed right on. I think when we calculated out the monthly premium that we're calculating here compared to what Quarks gave us, we were like $40 off. So it's just a difference of how it was budgeted in the past versus how we're budgeting this year. So any questions on wages, benefits, dental, health and dental, things like that? Really big part of our budget, so that's why we're showing it here. Okay, bottom line, we'll just go down to the bottom. So basically, we get down here, we see where our actual mill rate's going to be. It's about $8.36. That's per thousand. When we look at a house, per $100,000, we're paying about $836. That is a drop of $7 compared to last year. Any questions on that? Again, just historical perspective, you can see where we've been running from 2010 on, consistently saw increases, starting in 16, 17, and now 18. We're starting to see the decreases come in as well. Department requests, I don't think we need to go through these one by one unless anybody has any specific questions. We kind of talked about this at the Committee of the Whole meetings. But you can see the process was all the department heads forwarded, Director Gillingham, their requests for the year. They determine the estimated impact, and then we work them into the budget if we could. If we couldn't, we just know. If we couldn't, we just noted them here. So does anybody have any questions on the actual department requests themselves or want to discuss anything? Again, this just documents revenue that's earmarked for other funds, just kind of showing where we've changed from 2018. You can see Opera House has gone down by about $6,200. Public Safety Building went up a little bit, Library went up. Again, that's the shift in the way we're budgeting their actual wages this year. Landmarks is up a little bit. TIF 8, we're moving $58,000 to them for now. Again, that's not money lost. Eventually, that will be paid back once the TIF is able to pay it back. And then we see a drop in the actual budgeted amounts to the RDA of about $3,000. So again, this just kind of outlines the outstanding advances and I just kind of wanted to inform everybody of kind of where we're at and what other funds owe the general fund at this point in time. So you can see TIF 5 right now owes us a total of, looks like about $776,000. Again, once that increment starts coming in, they'll start paying that back, but that money is earmarked for it. Right now, you can see there's no increment expected for 2019 for TIF 5, which when I say TIF 5, I mean TIF 5 and TIF 8. We're still working through that restructure from an accounting standpoint. The city will need to cash flow TIF 5's debt service next year, but we do already have some excess sitting in the debt service fund, so it's not coming out of the general fund's pocket, if that makes sense. So we had some excess sitting in our debt service fund. It's a completely separate fund from the general fund, so we do have enough money in there to cover their debt service for next year. Currently, TIF 6 owes us about $139,000. Again, they do have a little bit of increment coming in in 19. We don't have the final numbers yet, but we're anticipating about $30,000 that they won't be able to afford on their debt service. City will need to cash flow this as well. Again, we have enough sitting in excess funding in the debt service fund to cover this as RDA owes us an advance of $81,000. EMS is at 415 right now. This balance is adjusted at year-end, it will go down. It's just due to kind of the accounting nature of how we do things throughout the year. So this number will go down. But as of right now, we have total outstanding amounts owed to the general fund of about $1.4 million. That's from other funds. So again, informational purposes only, just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of These are the summary of changes that we went through the Committee of the Whole meetings. You can see the 2019 CIP was reduced by $15,000. The overall plan was to just go ahead with it and use unsigned fund balance for that. At Finance tonight, it was determined that we'll bring this back to CACP at some point when we're ready to do it and let it run through the process from there. We did shift $59,000 from the RDA to TIF 5 and 8. I added $3,200 to TIF 5/8 for fencing, another $1,200 for public works-related storm water fees, once that property is transferred over to TIF 5 and 8. This bottom line here, and we may need to make a motion on this to make an amendment. TIF 5 and 8 has a grant right now. The total amount is $150,000. Originally, I submitted for $116,250. DOT called me back today and said, hey, you guys are actually eligible to just draw on the entire amount right now. So we'll just draw the entire amount, the $150,000 in 2018 and basically eliminate this amount as revenue in 19, if that makes sense. So that would be one amendment we would have to make to the actual documents that are in here tonight. So there's no change in dollar amounts, it's just a shift back to 18 and no money in 19. Any questions on that? Yeah?
But that's not going to really affect us at all, you're just changing numbers?
Changing when we're going to see the money, actually. We're getting it sooner rather than later. And it doesn't impact the general fund at all. So funds available for use, you can see TIF 3 currently owes us $171,000. As older person, Jurassic noted, we decided to use that in the debt service fund. I don't think we need to make any changes tonight because that is, it's, right now it's sitting in a TIF 3 fund. When we get to the point of using that money, we'll bring it back to Finance and Council in terms of how we're going to use it. Either we use it to prepay some debt or we use it down the road to cover some of the deficits in the TIFs for their debt service. Yes?
I just wanted to thank Denise for doing that and finding that extra money and appreciate that.
Okay, so you don't want me to make an amendment for the TIF 3, $171,304? I thought, because...
Well, I guess we can, to move it into debt service. Yeah, we can.
Yeah, because the Finance Committee met this evening and recommended that we move the TIF number 3, $171,304 into our debt service fund and I so move.
Okay, so that's an amendment now?
That's an amendment to the budget.
I second.
Okay, and so this money is basically, we're repaying ourselves because over the years, from the general fund, we paid into TIF number 3 certain amounts of money. And so now, we're able to repay ourselves that amount. And if we put it into the debt service fund, that gives Jamin an opportunity then to either pay off debt service for other tids that we have or he can look at maybe paying down our loan. That means that we won't borrow as much money in the future. So he has to kind of take a look at where the money is best spent if we put it into the debt service fund. Did I explain that okay?
Yes. You'll see some funny accounting related to this because we'll have to move the money to the general fund first and then basically move it to the TIFs if we're going to use it that way and then back into debt service fund, just to track it so we know. Because basically, if we use this money to pay for future TIF debt, the TIF owes that money to somebody. So you'll see some funny accounting when it actually finally happens, just to keep track of it in terms of, so if we use it to pay TIF 5 debt service in the future, we're not just giving it to them, we're not just giving it to the TIF, we're going to track it so we know that they still owe us that amount back. So does that make sense? Yeah.
Usually shows up on the audit as well, doesn't it?
Yeah, we'll track it, whether or not we show it as a transfer or just a balance sheet entry as an advance. We'll work through that accounting at a later date, so.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the amendment to the budget. Are there any questions on that? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. So that takes us, we still have the original motion as amended on the table. Did you suggest one other one?
If we, yeah, just to the TIF 5 grant amount, to basically eliminate that $33,000 from the 19 budget and move it back to 18. We don't need to change the 18 budget, we're just basically pulling that revenue out of 19, with the understanding that we're going to get the money in 18.
Okay, so does somebody want to entertain that amendment?
Yep.
Okay, older person, Jensen?
Now second that.
And second by Jurassic, did you get the wordage on that one? Do you want to help Holly out with that one?
Yeah, so we are eliminating the 30, what was it? I think it was $33,750 in grant revenue from the TIF 5/8 budget for 19, as that will be received in 18.
Okay, are there any questions on that one? Seeing none, all in favor of that amendment, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed? That carries. We're back to the original motion as amended twice. You might as well continue then.
Okay. Next bullet point there, we do have some special assessment funds right now, currently at $122,000. This amount will increase. We talked about it at Finance tonight. We will continue to leave those monies in the special assessment funds. We'll bring them back to Finance as we get closer to the 2019 borrowing and just use the excess that's in there to reduce that borrowing. No action needed tonight, we'll address that in the spring when we get closer to the borrowing. The debt service fund, again, we have an excess of $150,000. We've already recommended using that for the 2019 TIF 5, 8, and 6 debt service requirements. Again, we'll bring that back to the table in the spring in terms of how we're going to use it, but I see that we're probably going to use it for that purpose. The next two bullet points, I think the $5,000 we settled at Finance Committee, we're going to bring this back eventually, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's the plan. The idea is that the Chamber of Commerce has offered to do fundraising for basically half of the cost of the fireworks. They'd like to see the city fund the other half for the July 4th fireworks. So we're working through that right now and the idea would be is to take it out of contingency instead of amending the budget for it because right now, we're not 100% certain how that's going to work out.
Okay, the bullet point right above that, this was left over from the last Committee of the Whole meeting, $1,000 for affordable transportation in the 2019 budget. Do we want to have further?
Yeah, and people had questions on this and so Sharon Mason-Borsma is here to answer your questions about the Affordable Transportation Program. I think folks had some questions about grants and where they got their money from.
Yes, I can help answer that question. I'm the president of the Affordable Transportation Program, so is there, do you want to know where our funds come from for this program?
Yes, I think that would be good.
They come from a number of resources. We apply every year for the community block grant from Dane County and we get about half of our funds from that block grant. This year, we got up to $9,000. We haven't, however, seen all of that money as yet, so we want to continue to work on the requirements for that grant. So the funds come in sporadically from that grant. Next year, 2019, we are looking at having approval for $7,000 from that resource. We also get $4,000 from the Stoughton Area Community Foundation and we also have some private donors. We did apply for the Stoughton Utility Builders Fund. We haven't seen that as yet, but we have had that in the past. We also get our funds from some area churches in town, so they support our program as well.
Okay, older person, Hirsch?
Sharon, can you just clarify the difference between the Affordable Transportation Service and our, sorry, the Affordable Transportation Service and our taxi service? Because I think that question came up in the last time too, is why is there two different transportations and how do they differ and what is the community difference that they serve?
Yes, I can. The Affordable Transportation Program was created by a pastor here in Stoughton that felt that people in need needed transportation to get to significant appointments but couldn't afford the cab service. And so they started the program in 2012 to help adults who were unemployed or were at the poverty level to provide transportation for them that would be safe, reliable, and free of cost. And it started out in 2012, it continues today at the present time, and we service not only just internally, it first was started to service their, from their home to get to Madison for those significant appointments, which would be court appointments, medical appointments, housing appointments. The Job Center is a real popular transportation need and so we did a lot of that transportation the first few years of the program. Then we realized that they couldn't afford internal appointments, so to get from like the east side to the west side of Stoughton and back again would be expensive if you took the cab service for some people that couldn't afford that. And so now we do City of Stoughton food pantry runs, we also do those appointments that are significant internally as well.
And how many community members do you serve per year on average?
How many people? Richard, he is our staff person for this and our coordinator for transportation and he has some statistics to provide. Richard works about 10 hours a week for this program and he provides all the volunteer drivers who are screened, background-checked, credentialed, so that we have about five drivers who assist in this program.
Sorry. Thanks. Hello, everybody. I'm Richard Hoffman, Transportation Director, and I don't move very well. Some good questions and I want to backtrack a little bit, if I may, on, you know, actually, this program, about three years ago, I took over running the program. And for the last 10 years now, I have served RSVP in this community as the coordinator through the Senior Center. So I've got 10 years' experience getting drivers, coordinating that with the riders, et cetera. The current director, three years ago, left due to family health problems and I was contacted to see if I wanted to take over. And it was a good mix because I saw the need at the RSVP level, which has a 60-year-old limit cutoff. You have to be 60 or older to use that. I was getting phone calls from 30-year-old, 40-year-old, 50-year-old people in Stoughton. It was a real problem. So anyway, statistics-wise, okay, in 2015, we had 237 registered qualified rides. In 2016, we were up to 275 rides. And in 2017, we had 281 rides. These are rides to both food pantries internally within the community and to Madison. Our food pantry trips, United Methodist Church Food Pantry, we had 100 rides last year and the city food pantry is 54. This year, we're well over 100 at United Methodist and I expect us to exceed 100 for the city food pantry. Those two areas alone create a lot of driving for my drivers. Total administration costs for the program, my salary is $13 an hour and last year, it cost our program $1,800 for my services. We have no other costs for administration. I'm the program, I'm the only expense to see that the service is delivered locally. Our budget for transportation varies tremendously. For the rider, or for the driver, rather, cost of gasoline is a major factor. We pay above the federal rate, excuse me, we pay $0.55 a mile for our drivers. That's from the front door to the, pick up the rider, go to the appointment, come back, and then go back home. I have five drivers doing this. They're busy. We average, I average about 10 to 12 calls a month or a week in my residence. And my five drivers drive about six days a week. And I say six, we don't normally drive on Saturday or Sunday, but we do make exceptions for medical reasons. People don't pick the appointment time or the date and they have no control, so that's why we take them. I see a lot of homeless people beginning to utilize our service for job applications in Madison, to get up there and back, they have no transportation. And part of the reason that we're looking to the city for assistance is we hope to expand the amount of service that we provide the Stoughton people. We have a need within our community for young people in our educational system, once they graduate from school. It's a problem for many families to get their kids up to the vocational school for testing, for application, and stuff like that, as for the Job Center also. So any other questions on the number of rides? I think you can see the reason why our program exists, because the city cab service couldn't provide this. provide this. Majority of people who use our service are low, medium to low income as based on the federal standards. So, these are people making between $11,000 and $18,000 a year for two member family. And when I initially talked to a prospective rider and I talked to them about the position they're in and why they have to use us, it's pretty obvious that they're from payday to payday. They pay their rent first, second thing they do is feed their family, and the third thing they do is take care of themselves. In many instances, that's not a healthy situation to be in that position. So, we provide, I think, a service, you know, I always look at this and I say to myself, everyone has an option for medical and personal needs for transportation in Stoughton. You can drive yourself, have a friend or family member drive you, call a Madison taxi, call RSVP, but you've got to be 60 and not low income. Or you can call a Affordable Transportation where you have to be 18-years-old and you have to have low to moderate income qualifications, which really covers the bottom end of the rainbow. RSVP picks you up if you're 60 or older, but if you're 18 and older, I have some stories about people who have used our service. I have one gentleman I'll refer to, he was about 29-years-old. He came to Stoughton with $5 in his pocket from Chicago. He was a veteran. And he found a job at a local restaurant and washing dishes. And in speaking to the owner of the business, he said, "I'd like to get to Madison to apply for a job." And he had a family in Chicago he was waiting to bring up here. And so, the restaurant owner knew our service and he said, "Contact Richard." So, he called me. I stopped a ride for him. He said, "I don't have any money." And I said, "There's no cost." Took him up. He got a job. He finished his employment at the restaurant. On his last day on the job, the restaurant owner took up a collection for him and everybody chipped in a buck. They couldn't put any more in. And the gentleman came and handed me $47 and he said, "I know this isn't covered what you did for me," but he said, "It's the best I can do." That was the largest donation we received that year. The man now lives in Milwaukee, has a good full-time job. His family is up here. Those are the nice stories. And that's, you know, we don't do any counseling, but we do look at what the problem, that lack of transportation contributes to this person's possession in his life at that point. And, you know, we do go above and beyond. My five drivers are all RSVP drivers also, so I've known them for 10 years. They know what the rules are. They're all cleared, background checked, driver's license checked, et cetera. They do a tremendous job and we may be a small program. We're the only one in Dane County. We're the only program of its kind receiving funds from the CDPGs. And they have a hard time reconciling our program when we apply for funds each year on our grant because they have no other measurement to compare us to because, yes.
If people that are listening want to donate, who do they donate to?
The Affordable Transportation Program.
Did everybody get one of these brochures?
Recently, we were formed under the umbrella of the United Methodist Church. So, the first three and a half years, literally, it was supported to a great degree by United Methodist Church. Part of the problem after that, that I saw when I came on board was there was some reluctance to call us and some reluctance to use us because they felt you had to have an affiliation with the church. We ended that affiliation this year. We went on our own, formed our own nonprofit under the name Affordable Transportation. So, we're standalone. We do get the support from all the churches, United Methodist, Stoughton, the food pantry, we provide the transportation. And it's made a big difference because people now, when they'll call me, first thing they ask me is, "I don't go to the United Methodist Church. Do I still qualify for service?" And I have to explain this to them. Word gets around in our community very fast. And all I can say is, our request for the funding here is, because the funding we get from the county is sort of like we have to put everything out online first and then we recover our costs at the end of the year. Very tough to do that when we don't know what our costs are month to month. So, if we had funds coming in during the year that would back up our outlay until we get the funding from our results from the county grant would help us greatly.
Do we have any other questions?
We have one over here. Alder Person O'Connor has one and then Riley after that.
Ms. Pat.
Couple of questions. Do you screen the riders at all?
Do we screen the riders?
Yes. How do you limit them, I should say, you know?
The amount of screening that is done by the riders sometimes comes through the county. They're referred through Dane County Human Services, comes through the Senior Center if they're referred by the Senior Center. When they come to us without a referral, they have to fill out a county application. And on that application, it's name, address, date of birth, family size, stuff like that. But we're prevented from going beyond that, asking personal questions as far as their background is concerned.
The second question I had was, I think the original request was $5,000 and then it was $1,000?
Original request of $5,000 and I, two things came into play on this. We knew that you were within your budget period where you were ending deliberations on your budget. We'd love to have had $5,000, but we felt it was more reasonable for us to come in this late and ask for what we felt was really a life-saving request.
This will be an annual request, you think?
Probably will be, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Alder Person Riley, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. One, I'm looking at the brochure and I noticed this at our last meeting. It says that you are supported by the City of Stoughton. What is it that we're doing now, if anything, to support you? Are you just being generous in that description? Because I'm not aware of what we're doing.
I think the financial, we don't have formal financial support from the City of Stoughton, but they're supporting our program by helping.
The Senior Center.
With the Senior Center, the city food pantry.
The library.
The library, those are, those are advocates.
The school system even supports us.
And the Start Program supports us, so Dane County supports us.
So, in some secondary fashion, I got it, thank you.
Secondary support.
There we go. Thank you, I appreciate it.
In kind, we might call it?
Yes.
Well, we can call it that. The other, well, maybe this is for, I had thought that we had as much as 1,500 we thought we could possibly dedicate to this if we have the votes for that. Am I mistaken on that? I thought that there was money that was found that Jamin mentioned and it was, I believe, 1,500, 1,600. I don't know if that's available. I guess, Mayor, I apologize, may I ask that of Jamin?
You can ask anything you'd like.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Because I would be able to stop you anyway, right?
Yeah, well, that's probably true. Thank you. Jim, wasn't there, what, I thought that there was some fund that Denise had mentioned to you or you had mentioned to her that was in excess of the thousand, but like 1,500 or something?
Yeah, we reduced some last-minute expenditures based on discussions with Director Gillingham. So, right now, we're sitting at a profit of $1,374.
$1,374?
Okay.
And that is money that could, if it were approved on motion, et cetera, and vote, that we could dedicate to this program then? Thank you.
Alder Person Bartlett.
I guess, first question, Jamin, what's the precedence for putting a private organization in our budget annually? Do you know of anyone?
It's my first budget, Matt.
Yeah, I know that, yeah, I know. I don't remember seeing it, the last one that I was at either.
I don't know. I, yeah, I can't answer that.
And then, maybe, Alder Duran, since you put this forward, what was the process to select this one organization over all the others that are doing great things in the community?
Sharon lives in my district. She came to me. She said, "We are doing this, this work and transportation has always been an issue in this community." And because of my healthcare background and I know that they take people to, you know, their doctor's appointments in Madison, to kidney dialysis, I mean, those things cost a lot of money for that kind of transportation. So, I thought it doesn't hurt to bring it forward and say, you know, "We've recognized this as an issue. We haven't been able to really address it properly. This is kind of one way that maybe we can give back to the community a little bit."
Okay, so I, go ahead, Matt.
If I may continue, my problem's not with the group. It's a great group and definitely an issue that needs to be addressed. My problem is there wasn't really a fair and transparent process to let other opportunities for groups in the community apply for this grant. We have a number of requests that come through every year. I know we fielded a lot last year from groups that needed funds. So, I have an issue with putting, giving special treatment to an organization in our annual budget without giving that opportunity to others that are also doing things to address needs in our community. And I just think there wasn't a fair and transparent process. I would support this. I think we should budget maybe $1,000 or $5,000 or $10,000 in the budget and then create a process for this, such as Jamin brought up, the roundup process for utilities. They have an application process, they have set criteria, and they have a review process so everyone can have input. I just, I can't support this, just giving special treatment to one organization because I know the right people to talk to at the right time. I don't think the other groups had that opportunity, so I won't be supporting this. Thanks.
Alder Person Riley and then Johnson.
Thank you. Have there been grant requests? Has the city had a practice at all in the past of having any type of a grant set up and opening that up to requests? No?
Not that I'm aware of, but that doesn't mean there hasn't been. I know there's been other requests. I mean, we received a request earlier at Finance to waive some fees on housing projects. So, these types of things could come to us in many ways if we open it up. And I think, you know, certainly what Alder Person Bartlett says, I think going forward is a good idea. I don't know if that, you know, if you want to take that into consideration for this one or not, but I guess that's up to the group to decide. Go ahead.
Thank you. And I understand Councilperson Bartlett's objections. I just think this is a really worthwhile program. I think it's a program that's important to many of our constituents. I think it's a program that is worth funding to at least this extent. I understand that there's not been a process here per se. I understand that it might be unusual. I just think it's a great program and I think if we have $1,300 bucks that we can dedicate to this program and we're not violating any, you know, sacraments of any sort that I'm aware of, that I would like us to, I would support it. So, that's my position on it.
Alderman Bartlett, if I might, you're absolutely right. There's no standard to compare us to with this. The city does have a transportation program, but the shortcomings of your program is there's no way to get people from Stoughton to Madison. There aren't many groups out there, in fact, churches reached out to us because the pastors used to do all this on their off time, taking these people to these appointments. It developed into what our program is because of a need. I have not seen anybody step forward in six years asking to provide something that we're doing. Hold us under scrutiny, that's fine, but the lack of transparency is because there's no one that willing to take on what we've done, which we do, which benefits the city by itself.
And I appreciate that. It's a great cause and definitely an issue that needs to be addressed. And I don't have an issue funding you, I just need some kind of process for it. We also have people that are homeless. We have people that can't feed themselves for the holidays. We have people that can't pay their electric bills. I just would like a process and have a chance to put those forward because I know, I think this is going to mileage, what we heard last time, mileage reimbursement, so it's mainly going to be going to gas and insurance companies. I think food pantry or someone like that could spread the dollars much further. They can often buy in bulk and I've heard $1 for like food pantries can often spread $3 to $5 worth of buying power because they buy in bulk. I just think these funds are really limited for our resources citywide and I would like to see a process and have an opportunity to advocate for some other areas I think would be better spent than mileage. It's an issue that needs to be funded and I would love to help you when you come back. I just don't like picking one group over all the others and giving special treatment to them.
I wish there was more competition, would make our delivery of services much more than what we're able to handle now.
I wish we had more resources.
All right, we have others that we want to, that want to contribute to the conversation and then we have to decide if we're going to take action or not. So, I had Alder Person Johnson, then President Mieske, and then Alder Person Hirsch at Borsma.
Thank you and thank you for your service. I'm going to support this because I think one of the main problems that we do have in this district is people are hungry. And then when I hear that you're taking them to a food pantry, I think that's fabulous. We are, two cities are large in poverty in Dane County, Stoughton, and Marshall. And if you are taking people for food, thank you so much. And I will be also making a donation of my own privately to you. Thank you.
President Mieske.
I just wanted to support Alder Bartlett and his comments. I think this is a really good cause. The city does spend quite a bit of money in administrative costs and time and effort in transportation. This is a need. However, I agree with him that this is one of very many worthy groups that, and causes that need to be looked at. However, the way that this was brought forward without evaluating other needs from other groups, and it's just not a fair, it's not a fair, flat playing field here. We need to think real strong and hard before we accept this amendment. I think it's kind of a slippery slope. Is this, and, you know, we talk about all the time about how our budget is so tight and how much money we have. And what you're talking about right now is starting a line item budget for years to come. So, I don't know if I'm going to, I'm really torn on it if I'm going to vote for yes or no on this.
Alder Person Hirsch.
Thank you. And I want to thank you for all that you guys do because I think you acted on a need that the community needs and I think it's a larger issue. Transportation is a big issue in Stoughton. Both, we need, as a council and a mayor and a city, we need to figure this problem out. You have identified it, you've filled this gap. Now, I think it's on to us to make sure that it's, we create a viable solution that's long-term. And I think we need to start working with the county to get buses from Stoughton up to Madison that are reasonably priced. And we need to have some kind of other trolley service or something that goes from one end to the other of Stoughton. Stoughton is growing and people can't get back and forth, whether it's from jobs, from our affordable housing areas to where they are. It's a serious problem. Some that, you know, some of us in this room actually campaigned on and we need to really start working on it. So, I guess I challenge our President Mieske to start thinking about how we as a group, as a subcommittee, start really working on this with the county because we need to solve this problem before it gets, I mean, you guys are filling this gap.
We agree.
But we need to figure out a longer-term solution.
Yes.
And so, because you're trying to fill this gap, I will support this at this point, but I really think that we need to start looking at longer-term solutions.
You know, you're absolutely right. We feel that we're a stopgap that was formed and forged by a need of a group of people, citizens of Stoughton, who had no place to go to solve these problems. Transportation is an issue. Initially, the church was the founding driver behind this program because of the people that attended the church complained about they couldn't get any transportation to get their needs taken care of. We stepped in and kept the program alive when it was appeared to be dead. We're moving forward with it, which is, it's risky to put our hand out to want to accept these people and seeing their need and qualifying them and knowing how bad it is that they have to get this help. And on the other hand, not knowing- this help. And on the other hand, not knowing if six months from now, our funding's going to run short. So, yes, the city is faced with a dilemma. I could share a lot of stories with you about what the needs are and what has to be done. I can tell you this, on average, a taxi ride for a taxi to come from Madison to Stoughton to pick you up, take you to an appointment, wait for you, the wait time and bring you home is in excess of $88. People that call us don't have that kind of money.
Okay. I have Alder Person Boersma, and then after that, I guess I would ask if somebody's going to make an amendment, they would do so, so we can advance the conversation. Go ahead.
We have a number of services in Stoughton that fund issues that in emergency situations, for instance, Start to get people to appointments if there's really a need. This is one of the most, this is supportive services to other services that people provide, including food pantry, Start, a number of others, especially medical, that these are life-saving, the life-saving services, and it's in support of some life-saving services. This is a very important program. And if you look at this program versus some other programs, this is incredibly efficient program with the amount of money that it costs for the program versus, you know, the, what you'd have to pay for like the taxi ride. I'm fully in support of this program because I think it's really one of those supportive services that we can really do. We have a local transportation program. We don't have a program for hitting some very, very, very serious needs for people to get specialist appointment. If we had a hospital that covered all the issues, it would be different, but we don't. We have dialysis patients that need to get in, and that, those are life-saving measures. And this is an incredibly efficient program, and I'm all in support of doing what we can as a city to support this program.
Okay. So, who is going to make, Alder Person Drancy?
I will make the motion.
And I'll second.
Well, let him make it.
Okay. But I did want to, I did want to say that I think Alder Person Bartlett, you made a very good point, and I think that in going forward, we really should look at what the utilities has done. Because if we can, if we can find $9,500 to support landmarks, I think that we should be able to start to find monies in our budget to do some of these kinds of things, which is really important to folks. So, we all know that it's an amendment to the budget for $1,000 for the Affordable Transportation Program in the 2019 budget. And I so move.
And there was a second, and I saw Alder Person Reeves had her hand up earlier.
Well, the thing that I'm really struggling with, and I, we've had a lot of debate, and it seems that it keeps coming back to how important this is, but I'm really uncomfortable that I think there are many organizations, and this group had the benefit of an ear and a person on the council. And I don't have a good explanation to the other 10 or 20 organizations that maybe didn't have an opportunity to apply for this. So, I'm not, this is not about whether or not I think what they do is fantastic. I am very uncomfortable with awarding this without giving anyone else the benefit of this $1,000. So, I'm going to have to say no. I am not, I am in favor of, you know, an amendment that we could add $1,000 and someone, you know, people could apply to it with, but I'm just, this is, it just puts me in a very uncomfortable situation. So...
Mayor, can I address her a moment?
We have to make it briefly. We have like 10 other items on the agenda.
Reeve, I support what you're saying, but in my experience, the referrals are coming to us from Rotary Club, Kiwanis, the churches. Every organization that contacts me regarding transportation is an organization that's backed away from this type of program in their own, the BFW has volunteer driver members. They call me because their members are not available to do it. They don't want to take on the program. The American Legion calls me. They have a driver program. They don't have drivers available at the times we provide them. They do birthday rides only. We don't do medical. So, it's a problem that if there were more organizations out there, I would have thought they would have come forward sooner.
I have Alder Person Hirsch, and then O'Connor.
Thank you. I totally agree with Alder Person Bartlett and Reeves. So, I'd like to make an amendment that this year, we go forward with $1,000 to this group, but I send it to the CACP Committee to come up with a process for years going forward to give something, $1,000 or $9,500, whatever we can figure out from the budget, like the utilities project for organizations, community organizations that are trying to do something broader and that benefits the committee.
I accept that as a friendly amendment.
No such thing.
We really need a second, don't we?
No such thing as a friendly amendment.
Yeah. So...
This could be an amendment to the amendment.
It's an amendment to the amendment. So, we need a second.
Second.
Okay. So, a second by Boersma. So, any discussion or clarification on what Regina
just outlined? Go ahead.
My question would go to Regina as well. Are we looking at establishing a new line item? Are we looking to reduce contingency in 2019 by 1,000? I'm not sure what we're doing.
I think that's something that the CACP will look at and come up with a plan and present it back to the full council. And we can say like in six months or something like that. Okay, I won't say something like that. In six months, we will come back with a plan. Since our lead, Nicole, is not here right now. So, that's what happens when you miss a meeting, you get dumped on. But I think, I would like to propose that we'll come back in six months with a plan and have you guys approve.
We'll probably make this donation before six months, so...
No, I'm saying that we, this year, we give the $1,000, and because it's, we're coming up to the end of this budget season, and we can't create a plan like Councilperson Bartlett and Reeves are concerned about, by the time the next budget is, we have a plan in action of how to handle future requests.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Does that clarify it for everybody? Okay. So, we're going to vote on the amendment. So, it's an amendment to the amendment. Is everybody clear what that means?
No.
Okay.
So, the main motion was to approve the budget.
Right.
The amendment was to include $1,000 for affordable transportation in that budget.
Mm-hmm.
The proposed amendment is what Alder Person Hirsch proposed, which as I understand it was to include the $1,000 in the budget for affordable transportation and to refer to the CACP Committee the task of coming up with a plan to implement next year for administering requests for funding, something like that.
Groovy. Got it. And we voted on those two amendments.
Right now, you're going to vote on Alder Person Hirsch's amendment, which is effectively to change the proposed amendment, to add to it the notion that you're referring to the CACP Committee this task.
Can I just withdraw my amendment then?
No, because it belongs to the council.
Oh, okay.
Alder Person Jensen, did you have?
Yeah. Again, I'm, I share some of the concerns here that have been stated. I would, I would support Regina's amendment, except that I don't particularly like having the $1,000 in there to begin with. I would rather have the process in place. If this was amendment to set up a process, I'd be supporting it. But to put the money out there, again, I don't know. This is really uncomfortable because I do believe that this is a wonderful project. And this is, this is a difficult position that we're in. But I do honestly believe that the process needs to be there before we go ahead and start making donations like this to private organizations. So...
Is it a private organization or is it a nonprofit?
Nonprofit.
Well, even to a nonprofit. But that's just, that's my feeling, and I'm, I can't support it because of that.
Alder Person Boersma.
I'm not, I'm not sure that everybody completely understands this, although maybe, maybe I'm the one who doesn't understand it completely. But the Affordable Transportation Program has undergone some changes required to, required to do their own 501(c)(3) of recent, of late. So, they're in a situation where they are changing and modifying their program at the end of the year. There's justification for them to bring this situation to the fore now because of major changes in their program, their programming. They were under the umbrella of the United Methodist Church, and that has had to change. So, if there were other groups that had some desperate need, and they would come to the council, I could, I could see that as being maybe more fair. But I'm not sure enough emphasis was put on by the presenters that this is a necessary change because of the change in the status of actually Affordable Transportation Program. So, I just want to emphasize that, that they're in a desperate sort of spot right now. And so, they need to keep going, and they certainly need some help and funding. And I think the appropriate place is from our city. If we can do it, we should do it. Other groups I know need to, need money as well. But this is, this is a critical time for the Affordable Transportation Program. I'm not sure everybody understands that completely. So...
Okay. So, are we ready to vote? Or anybody else? Okay. So, all in favor of the amendment brought forth by Alder Person Hirsch, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Nope.
So, I heard three noes. So, that amendment passes, which takes us back to Alder Person Drancy's amendment. Is that correct?
Yes, as now amended.
As now amended to include the process for CACP to review the application for going forward. Any questions on Alder Person's Drancy's amendment, which is basically to add the $1,000 in for this budget cycle? Here are none. All in favor, oh, go ahead.
Specifically for that, for...
Affordable Transportation.
Right, for the Affordable Transportation. Yep. So, all in favor of Alder Person Drancy's amendment, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
No.
I heard three. We can...
Roll call.
Roll call. Okay. We can do that?
It is a conflict of interest.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Riley?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Mieske?
No.
Caravelo?
Aye.
Jensen?
No.
O'Connor?
Aye.
Drancyk?
Aye.
Bartlett?
No. And I'd like to bring up, this is a conflict of interest for Alder Person Boersma, whose wife is the president of the organization.
I think I would look at Attorney Dregney for that. I don't know what the definition...
Giving city funds to an organization?
What position does Mrs. Boersma hold within the organization?
I have no position in the organization. I'm married to Sharon Mason Boersma. But I have no position in the organization. I know a little bit about the organization because I, because one, I'm a social worker, and I know, I know about that program. I know about some of it through, through my, certainly my dealings with my wife, but also for dealings with other people who are associated with that program. So, I don't think I should, I should abstain.
Is your wife an officer or director of the...
She is, she is an officer.
Then I think you probably have a conflict of interest.
Okay.
I can verify that if you want to. Give me a minute.
Yeah, could you?
Yeah.
Does it matter if she's a paid officer?
Right. That's what's going to be my question. It's a nonprofit, and there's no pay.
We're getting out the book.
Get out the book, man.
Well, it all depends on how the nonprofit is structured.
And man, I also spoke to the amendment.
Right.
The other option here would, you'd have to abstain, right?
Abstain would remove the issue.
Okay. I reconsider my vote. I will abstain.
Okay. All right. Did you catch that?
Under some objection, but I do abstain.
Okay.
I still want.
That's a good answer to get.
I'd like to have the answer, if we may, unless it's going to take a long time.
So, I think I'm here. So, organization means any corporation, partnership, or proprietorship firm, enterprise, franchise, association, trust, or other legal entity. So, I think this is an organization. So, then the question is whether Mr. Boersma is associated with the organization.
Not.
You're associated if Mr. Boersma or a member of his immediate family is a director, officer, or trustee. So...
I'm glad I abstained.
Sounds like you're associated with the organization.
I, now I abstain without any objection whatsoever.
Okay. All right. So, we had a final tally with the exception.
The motion carried 10-3 with Boersma abstaining.
Okay. So, that carries. So, we're back to the original...
10-3 is 13 people.
It can't be 10.
I'm sorry. Seven, I'm sorry. Seven-three with Boersma abstaining.
It is budget time. Okay. So, that carries. So, we're back to the budget with, as amended three times, right?
Correct.
That's where we're at. Is there anything else we needed to cover? We got down to about that point. It seemed like we came to a screeching halt.
No. Well, we can go through the rest of this very quickly. So, the last bullet point on this page, the equipment replacement funding, these were some ideas that Alder Person Drancy brought to the table at Finance, also at the Committee of the Whole. We've determined to kind of put these on hold as we work through the rightsizing process. A lot of moving parts to that that we're going to continue to look at. This may come into play at a later date, but as of right now, it won't impact the budget. Same thing here where we're talking about the Building Maintenance Reserve.
I think you have to speak up louder because people at home are really going to be having a hard time.
The subject, subjects related to the Building Maintenance Reserve Fund, these were also tabled at Finance. No immediate impact to the budget, the 2019 budget, and we will resolve some of these issues at the next Finance Committee meeting. Other than that, I think that's about it. We got the dog with the coffee cup. So, balanced budget by around 374 bucks at this point. Other than that, the other documents attached, this is just an overall general fund summary of the entire budget document that we had at the Committee of the Whole. It's also attached at the bottom of this. It's about 20-some pages. This summary is about, let's see, it looks like two pages. And here is the overall 2019 mayor's proposed budget, which takes up the next 15, 16 pages of this document. We went over this in detail at the Committee of the Whole meetings outside of the discussions held there, and the changes made here. Nothing else has changed. So, that is the 2019 operating budget.
Okay-dokey.
All right. Are there any questions on any of this? So, right now, we have a motion with three amendments that have passed. Are there any other amendments? Otherwise, I think we're ready to vote on the budget. All in favor of the budget, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That carries. Thank you very much. Thanks for all your work, Jamin.
Yeah, thank you.
You made it.
Oh, I should throw this in. Sorry. The stormwater budget was also included as part of the packet, but overall, sorry, we didn't bring that up. But no changes to the discussions held at Committee of the Whole as well.
All right. The next one is Resolution 185 of 2018, and that's the CIP, and that also came from Committee of the Whole, President Mieske.
Thank you. The Committee of the Whole authorize, brings forth 185, 2018, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the City of Stoughton five-year 2019 through 2023 capital improvement budget, CIP. Committee of the Whole recommended that 11 to 0, and I so move.
Second.
A second by Riley. Okay.
I just, Jamin, maybe you can answer this question. From the budget, we have a $7 decrease per $100,000. With a CIP and borrowing, does, does that increase, does that negate the $7 savings?
So everything in this CIP budget right now actually won't hit our levy until 2020. So basically, everything that's hitting the debt service portion of our property levy is our decisions that have already been made at this point. So this will, we would borrow this money in 2019, no payments would come due until 2020. That's when we would see the impact of this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So what I'm going to do is just kind of quickly run through some of the big ticket items that were in our CIP. And before I do, I want to thank the CIP Committee, which is made up of the, the chairperson from each of the committees. We had three meetings. I thought we had some good conversation, good input. Certainly staff did a nice job preparing their portion of it and were real flexible when we were trying to, to narrow this thing down. Some of the numbers on this cover sheet have changed a little bit since it went through CIP, but overall, the totals are about the same. So we'll just kind of buzz through this. The reason I wanted to cover this is really the biggest impact in our future tax levy is going to be because of the, the amount of money we've been borrowing in the last several years. We've seen that going up in Stoughton and that's not unique to Stoughton. It's happened in most municipalities throughout Wisconsin as operating budgets have become Municipalities are looking for ways to maintain the services and provide the things that the community deserves. On this particular budget, you're going to see a number of initiatives, things that we, we want to go forward on, things that maybe in the past we have deferred and we've reached a point where we just need to start, you know, taking care of some of our maintenance. So as we flip through here, the first one is the, the riverfront development. The riverfront development is going to, the next phase is going to include next year demolition of the public works garage, do some environmental testing, remediation, riverbank restoration, and creation of green space. And that's something the RDA is working on and that's about a half a million dollar investment. Some of that will be offset by some grants. The grant numbers may change. Hopefully, we'll continue to receive grants, not only on the, on the redevelopment area, but also on some of the other projects. The next one is the Whitewater Park. We had budgeted in the CIP $88,500 and that one was one that we had changed from our initial discussions and that was based on feedback from the DNR. They want us to focus on two phases next year. Phase one, which is about $50,500, is on preliminary design and the permitting of the downstream area. What we learned through this permit, through this grant process is that the stewardship grant would be best served if we write that grant and specifically address the downstream area. So that's what the $50,500 would do. The other thing that was suggested by the DNR was to do a hydrological study to determine water levels and that was about $38,000. And then there's also going to be some work potentially done to make a determination on whether or not we're going to look at removing the dam or we're going to leave the dam in going forward. The next grant opportunity for dam removal would be in 2020, so we have some time to make that decision. But there's some things that we could do in the meantime to secure some grant funds. We have $700,000 in there for new fire truck. Squad Five is reaching the end of its useful life for Stoughton. We have increasing needs for storage and capacity in the truck. Our issues for us. We have $2.6 million in for Glacier Moraine Drive. You may recall Glacier Moraine Drive is the road that will be coming off Williams Drive by North American Fur in the business park. In our development agreement, we agreed that we would connect that road going through there to Progress Lane, which is backed by Alliance Energy. By the end of 2020, we feel if we defer it another year, it's just going to probably cost us more money to, to complete that construction. We have a lot on the business park that we're also in the process of trying to sell. We feel that making the road improvements will make that lot more marketable. We have over $300,000 in the building maintenance. That includes $100,000 for McFarland State Bank and another big chunk of money for, will be for some work we're doing at the senior center for the parking area. We have a parking underground area with parking on top of it. It's starting to deteriorate. We want to do some preventive maintenance before it gets out of hand. Sidewalk maintenance program. We have a couple of different things that are in that. Some of it is removal and replacement of sections that are cracking or heaving and then we continue to install new sidewalks as part of projects throughout the city. We're going to initiate a $180,000 street preventive maintenance program. And if you've looked at our roads, you know that they're in pretty rough shape and we believe some of that is because we have done a permit on preventive maintenance and talking to Planning Director Schiel and Director Haber and Public Works. We, we believe that we can get longer and better roads if we do some early preventive maintenance and extend the life of the roads. Zoning code updates due to changes in state law, we're going to be looking at investing some money and having some zoning codes and some reporting requirements that are going to be in next year from the state of Wisconsin. These are basically what I would call unfunded mandates that have come down from the state. We expect that the city attorney will be involved in some of them conversations. We're hoping to collaborate with other municipalities because we know many of us have some of the same challenges. Some of them might be specific to Stoughton in our zoning codes, but we're hoping we can partner. I know the League of Municipalities at the conference I was at a couple of weeks ago have already begun some of those discussions. Public Works, we have almost a half a million dollars worth of equipment. We're going to invest in Public Works. It includes a patrol truck, a loader, lifts for lifting the vehicles in the new Public Works garage, grapple bucket, which I believe they use for trails, forklift that they'll use in the new Public Works garage. They'll have a mezzanine area for storage and they want to be able to lift items up into there. So, and they're going to, they're going to utilize as much equipment as they can from the current building to the new building, but some of the stuff's just not going to be worth moving. Stoughton Transit Van with lift, a lot of that's going to be offset by the grant. We're going to get another van for Stoughton cab, which will have a lift, which are in real demand. Most of our wait times that are caused for people either going to school or businesses or appointments are caused because they have to wait for the van with the lift. Right now, there's three. Adding four to the fleet will, will really help that problem for our transportation within Stoughton. Jamin wrote the grant. Tammy had printed out the grant before she left Stoughton and put it on my desk to make sure we didn't forget to do it. So I'd like to thank her for doing that and we were able to execute that and we were awarded that. So that was a, a big win for us. Industrial Park Bio Swale, this was something that we need to do in order to improve our water quality and I'm sure Rodney could give you all the exciting details on that. But basically Rodney, I believe, wrote three grants that we were successful. They're going to offset more than half of the cost of putting in that new bio swale in the, in the business park. So thanks for Rodney for doing that one. A few others that I wanted to highlight, we're going to have over $2.7 million worth of road improvements in Stoughton next year. That's going to include major roads such as Jackson Street and Lincoln. And there'll also be, you know, that number includes some of the special assessments that will be reimbursed for. But there's going to be a lot of road construction in the next couple of years and it's, we're going to do our own and then the DOTs, you might have heard, are going to be doing some in 2020. So I think you're going to see dramatic improvement and hopefully people will at least see what they're getting for their money. IT Media, we're going to have quite a bit of money that we're invested in IT. We knew that when we hired Director Montgomery, we were going to have some IT equipment needs and we decided to defer them until we had an IT director in place now that he's been in there a while and has a chance to evaluate the equipment we have. We're ready to make purchases to upgrade our systems. Park Maintenance, that includes money for basically maintaining the equipment that's currently in parks and then park improvements is another cost that we have. And that'll include new playground equipment at Kittle Park with the natural features, Nordic Ridge, including ADA accessible Dream Park type equipment and then also Mant Park Master Planning Initiative. So those are kind of the big ticket items that I just wanted to blow through briefly so everybody was aware of where their money's going because in a couple of years, when people see their property tax bills, this borrowing that we're doing today will be reflected in there and I'm sure it'll have some impact on all of us. Any questions on any of that? I know it was a lot and it was quickly, but most of it, at least the committee chairs have seen already. Okay, no questions on that. We do have a motion and a second to approve the CIP budget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Thank you. Next one is Resolution 186 of 2018. I'm not really sure who wants to introduce this one. Sounds kind of like a Public Works thing.
I can do it real quick. This actually has?
You can't.
No, I can't? Okay.
Well, you can't make a motion, but you can introduce it.
You can't make a motion. Okay.
No. It, it should be done by an alder.
Okay. That's not?
Okay. Who wants to make the motion?
I'm on Public Works.
Okay. So we have a motion?
Yeah, bringing Resolution 186, 2018, setting a special charge for garbage and recycling collection fees. Motion to approve.
Second.
I heard a second by Boorsma. Any discussion? Or you want to give it to Jamin?
Give it to Jamin.
Okay.
There you go, Jamin.
Thank you. Ultimately, this, this is, we're just formalizing the actual garbage and collection fee. It hasn't changed. This will change in 2020 once the contract rolls over. But right now, we just wanted to formalize it because it'd never been passed in, in previous years. So that's, all this is doing is formalizing the actual fee that goes on the tax roll.
Could you say that again and say it into the microphone? I didn't understand what you said.
All this is doing is actually formalizing the garbage and recycling fee. It hadn't been formalized in the past, so we are simply doing that right now. It will change in 2020 once Director Haber goes back and redoes the actual garbage and recycling contract with the outside party. But as of right now, this fee has not changed. We're just formalizing it for, for these purposes.
Okay. Any questions on that one? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Thank you. Next one is Resolution 187, 2018, comes from Finance.
Finance Committee met on October 23rd and recommends approval of R187, 2018, approving revisions to the City of Stoughton fund balance policy and I so move.
Second. Second by Jensen. Any discussion on that one? Alder Person Duran'sic?
No, we're just kind of cleaning it up to, to make a few things a little clearer and also make it a little easier for us to access the funds. The fund, we're supposed to have between 20 and 25% in our undesignated fund balance and, you know, basically we're just making it a little easier for us to get at that, that portion of the undesignated fund balance.
Okay. Any questions, comments, concerns? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? That carries. Resolution 188 of 2018 comes from Public Safety. Alder Person Jensen?
Resolution 188, 2018, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve an inter-agency agreement and accept the crowd control grant on behalf of the Stoughton Police Department and I would so move.
Second.
Second by O'Connor. Any discussion, Greg?
Just, this is something that, well, I'll have to chief explain it.
Yeah, this is a part of the Wisconsin's Emergency Police Services Grant that we applied for with our training consortium, which consists of the cities of Monona and Verona and the villages of McFarland and Oregon to join a, or to form a joint crowd control unit, which will, in the grant covers training and equipping the unit. And we were fortunate enough to be awarded the grant. And this agreement allows us to basically enact mutual aid in advance in case it's needed. The unit is going to be designed to assist in any of the member communities and then also be available as a regional resource as well in case there's a large demonstration someplace that we need to participate in.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Dregny, did you have anything to add? I think I saw your name on this one at one point.
I helped with the drafting.
That was it?
Pretty much.
Okay. All right. Alder Person Hirsch and then Duran'sic.
Yes, thank you. Chief Le, can you kind of more explain what type of equipment this all entails? I mean, I'm a little bit concerned after seeing some crowd control aspects down in Missouri and other things. I want to make sure that we're not kind of going to that kind of militaristic kind of crowd control, but it's a little bit more.
Yeah, this is actually very defensive equipment. It is body pads and, and shin pads, things like that to protect the, the wearer from objects being thrown. Also, it's going to include helmets with face shields in the front and then also the, the plastic shields that you see for moving crowds and protecting the officers. So it's not offensive equipment in any context. It's all defensively related so to protect the, the wearer from debris and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Alder Person Duran'sic?
Yeah, reading the materials, it sounded like we would have to kick in some funds. Is this correct?
Yeah, there is a 20% match and we do have the money because in the 2018 budget, you actually approved last year money for protective equipment and crowd controlled gear. So we actually had money budgeted already for that.
Okay.
So that's our 20%.
So that, that covers it?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Alder Person Bartlett?
I guess, Chief, what, how many people do you foresee being on this combined unit with the limited resources we often have during the day? Is this like an all hands on deck? They would all be trained and equipped?
No, no. Mostly what it's going to be is it's, it's a total of 13, so our commitment to the group is three. Since we are the lead agency, we're also in that three, one of those will be a supervisor and then they will coordinate the unit. And basically what this would be is as a needed basis, once they're initially trained, the training is about 32 hours, once they have the initial training, there really won't be much other than a refresher a couple of times a year just to make sure that they know how to move as a group and so forth. The, the biggest benefit that we're going to receive from the training is having officers that understand how to preserve the rights and, and protect the rights of individuals that are, that are protesting and things like that. That's first and foremost because it's kind of Greek and, and really where this came from is when we were called to assist during the Act 10 protests at the Capitol and none of our staff was properly equipped, properly trained. I mean, so it, it really kind of spurred us to, to have that understanding that, you know, we really need to be able to have officers that understand what it, what it entails, how to do it safely, how to protect citizens, how to protect the officers that are involved and just generally just to have that good general knowledge, plus have a set of group of people that can be, you know, actively brought in fairly rapidly. Their, their, the state actually refers to them as rapid deployment groups and that's basically what it is.
Alder Person Riley?
Thank you. What would the geographic area be with respect to our involvement or the involvement of this particular unit? The, you know, the, the inter-agency agreement study, et cetera. Where, where might you be employed with respect to that type of crowd control?
Well, the, the, the member groups are first and foremost. I would imagine that we could get requests from anybody, but we have no binding agreement that says we have to go anyplace else.
The, you know, the inter-agency agreement study, et cetera? Where might you be employed with respect to that type of crowd control?
Well, the member groups are first and foremost. I would imagine that we could get requests from anybody, but we have no binding agreement that says we have to go anyplace else in the state. We would if there was a need, similar to what we would do now if there's a request. It's all part of the Wisconsin's Emergency Management, Emergency Police Services Program, which is designed to, you know, bring in help if there's a major event someplace in the state. And it's really on a kind of a, if you can come, come type of a basis.
So may I apologize?
Sure.
Thank you. Is there, does anybody in particular have authority to, you know, basically state that we need you? We need you at the Capitol. Walkers decide not to leave, something like that? I don't know.
That's probably not likely, but we could receive a request from anybody, and it's basically a mutual aid request. If it comes in as a mutual aid request, we are obligated, as would other agencies, to come to our aid, would be obligated for that emergency or that mutual aid request.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right. Who wants to follow that? Any other questions or comments on this one? All right. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? That carries. Ordinance 25 of 2018 is a first reading, and this comes from Public Safety.
Thank you, Your Honor. By request of the Chief, I'm going to move to waive the first reading. And we'll right straight to a second reading on this.
Okay. So there's a motion to waive the rules? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Riley, and then let me just explain, to waive the rules, we need a two-thirds vote. Go ahead.
Yeah, and the reason for this is that with the weather getting colder, it's going to be more difficult to place the signs, so we'd like to get it done as soon as possible. That's the reason for it.
So then the motion right now is to waive the rules?
Waive the rules.
So we would vote on that, and then we'd come back and...
Can I, can, I don't know if I can...
Can you explain why you want us to waive? What are you trying to do on Robey?
What we're trying to do is to just expedite the...
Can you speak up a little bit into the mic?
We need to expedite the process because of the cold weather coming in. They need to place signs.
It's already here.
And therefore, the ground is freezing, and so we'd like to be able to do this as soon as possible. That's the reason for it.
No, but the, okay.
Do you have something you want to add, Chief?
No, no, and I need to request...
Is there an issue on Robey Road, or what's going on?
Well, this is designed to improve the sightlines at Robey and Nygaard, which is a very busy intersection with all the businesses in that area, the general traffic. And what we're trying to do is broaden the sightline so that there aren't vehicles parked that would interfere with the ability to, for another vehicle to see traffic coming from the, from, toward the intersection. So, and our desire to waive the reading was, is that we know the frost is going to start setting in soon. We'd like to, you know, not wait another two weeks to maybe get this process started earlier, because they'll still have to go through the, you know, the locate and all that before they can drop the signpost in.
How was this one initiated? I don't know the whole background.
Yeah, this was initiated by a couple of citizens. Wrote me an email. They were very concerned about the vehicles parking close to that intersection, especially on Nygaard, and then along the south side of Robey Road, just to the east of Nygaard Street. And, you know, because of the way that, the amount of traffic on Robey Road, they just weren't able to see adequately in time. And we, I know we've had a lot of near misses there, and probably a couple of minor crashes, but this is more preventative, and we wanted to get in there and make sure that those sightlines were approved before we did have a major crash at that location.
Okay.
We have a motion pending right now. So what I want to do is just to make sure that, I want to make sure that people understand that this waiver, to waive the motion, or the way the first reading, would be for all three of these.
All three of them?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Is that your understanding, Chief?
Yes.
Okay. Alder Person...
That's what I wanted.
Oh, stole your thunder.
I'll have some more coming, don't worry.
Any question on waiving the rules on... So is a motion for all three, or we're going to do one at a time?
Motion would be for all three.
The motion, as I understand it, is to waive the rules to allow both a first and second reading and adoption on items 13, 14, and 15 on each.
All three of them?
Correct.
Okay. Is that what the second wanted?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right. So all in favor of waiving the rules on all three, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Okay, so the rules are waived.
All right. So I would move to approve O 25, 2018, amending Chapter 71, 76 of the City Municipal Code, creating subsection 76 relating to the parking restrictions on both sides of Nygaard Street, 25 feet south of Robey Road, and I would so move.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. I see Alder Person Duransik?
Yes. Do you have some maps? Because I went and I looked at this area, and I wasn't quite sure where 25 feet was, and I certainly was a little concerned about 185 feet along Robey Road, so...
Well, if you can, and I don't have any map that was included. You could probably look on Google's map. Basically, what the Nygaard 25 feet is about a car length and a half. And so if you'd imagine from the intersection sidewalk, about 20, about 25 feet back, which is about a car length. Robey Road's side of it, on the south side, extends from the intersection to almost to the driveway.
Almost to the driveway, okay.
In the deeks. I think there's going to be room for maybe one or two stalls on the end, but that's pretty much. And the reason for the extra length there is because of how the building is situated on the lot. You really have to be right up there to see, and then if there's any cars parked there. And again, since Robey is a through fair, the cars tend to travel a little faster there, and so we wanted to make sure that they had adequate time to react and not pull out in front of somebody.
Thank you.
I saw a hand up over here.
Yeah.
Okay, so Boersma, and then O'Connor?
Yes, Chief, is that going to be painting as well as signs or not? I'm not sure about the painting. It'll definitely be the signs. Normally, what'll happen with the painting, it usually has to wait, especially this time of year. Have to wait till spring now to get that yellow curb. I think painting and signs, you know, that's what I look for. Right.
And the map is on the board, just like that. It's the magic of Rodney.
Wow.
And then Alder Person O'Connor had his hand up.
Yeah. Greg, you contacted Deeks, and you haven't heard anything back from them? Nope. I sent them a letter letting them know that we're discussing, and when it was on the agenda for the Public Safety Committee meeting, and if they couldn't make it, they could contact me and let me know, and I would relay any thoughts they had, and I did not receive any response back.
Any questions? So we're on ordinance 25, which is the first one. Anything else on that one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? That carries. And then ordinance 26. Alder Person Jensen?
Thank you. O 26, 2018, amending Chapter 71, 76 of the Stoughton, or the City of Stoughton Municipal Code, creating subsection 75 relating to parking restrictions on the south side of Robey Road, Nygaard Street, 185 feet east, and I would so move.
Second.
Second by O'Connor. Any discussion on that one? Hearing none, all in favor of that one, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Ordinance 27.
Yes. Thank you. Ordinance 27, 2018, amending Chapter 71, 76, parent 61, of the Stoughton Municipal Code, relating to parking restrictions on Veteran Road between the intersection of US Highway 51 and Verin Street, and I would so move.
Second.
There's a second by O'Connor on that one. The map is loading as we speak. Anybody have any questions on that one?
Well, I want to see what...
You want to walk us through that one, Chief?
Yeah, this is basically a correction to a modification we made last year in the parking regulations to accommodate the bike lanes on the new portion of Veterans Road that was resurfaced in 2018, or...
This year.
This year. I'm sorry. Yeah, it was this year. And it, this ordinance now matches the parking in the painting that was done on that street, which, well, it accommodates the bike lane, which is out far enough, so that it can allow parking to a certain extent on the west side, just south of 51. And so what this ordinance does is it corrects the previous, the change that we made, and it matches literally what's painted on the roadway.
Can you, you don't have a pointer showing where this actually would be?
51's, 51's along the north side of the page, Veterans Road is on this side. The parking restrictions are in this area, where it actually allows parking in this section, because there's a bike lane on the outer portion of this lane. There's no parking on the east side of the street here.
Thank you. I just couldn't get oriented.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on that one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed?
Resolution 189 of 2018 comes from Public Safety. Are you the only guy who's doing anything these days, or what?
We do our meetings. This one's for Sid, actually. R 189, 2018, authorizing directing to proper city officials to approve a temporary Class B, Class B retail license for a special event license for the American Cancer Society Relay for Life Holiday Home Tour Open Gala, and I would so move.
Second.
A second by O'Connor. This an annual event, or what is this one?
This is an annual event, and both Holly and I have reviewed the applications and recommended approval to the Public Safety Committee. This does move different houses once in a while, as the members move the event around through their membership a little bit. So, but we have not had any issues in the past with this event at all.
Okay. Alder Person Boersma?
How many years has this been going? The liquor portion, I'm not sure, maybe three, two or three? Yeah. But, I mean, we've had the Relay for Life in Stoughton for a long, long time, and the event has been held at various locations. It's been at Man Park, it's been at the high school, and this is just a little bit of different take on that. For the last couple of years, they've been doing this as part of their group's activities. Has it, are kids involved with this at all? I don't believe so, no. They don't attend at all? Not that I'm aware of.
Any other questions or comments on this one?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
One abstention. Two in one night. Resolution 190 of 2018, this one's coming from Public Safety as well.
Thank you, sir. Resolution 190, 2018, approving designated snowmobile route to the city right of way, and I would so move.
Second.
Second by O'Connor. Any questions on this one? I see Jim is still in the crowd. If he need to talk to somebody about snowmobile routes, he's our man.
Rodney has the map up, and so I'm just kind of wondering, you know, where it is exactly.
That is one that's in your packet. There is a map in the booklet that's part of the packet information, but Rodney could probably pull it up. It, you know, there it goes, right there. You see that it comes across some of the Linnarood property at BN 51 and across...
Oh, that I'm not concerned about. I'm concerned about when it comes into the city at 51 there, and it said, you know, right of way, because they wanted to access the restaurants there. And so I'm kind of like, well, this is in the city. Where in the city are they going to run these snowmobiles?
Yeah, it actually stops at the empty lot at Robey and 51, and they have permission to use that lot, and they, the snowmobilers like it because they can access the gas station, the QuickTrip there, and then also the restaurants and...
Okay. So on the south side there of Robey, that empty lot, is that what we're talking about?
That is what we're talking, that's where the designation of the trail in the city ends.
I tried my colors.
Right.
Alder Person Boersma?
I wonder if this route goes across the mayor's lawn? If not, why not?
No.
You could make that amendment. It's not a very big lawn.
Does this...
This is a formality that we do every year. We, we're required by ordinance to designate the routes to the city for the snowmobile usage, and this has been in existence for, oh gosh, many years. They've had that access to that empty lot there, and I would imagine that will continue until somebody buys and develops the lot. And they do get, as part of their process, they get permission from all the landowners that they go across to establish the trail. And of course, it's part of the extensive trail system throughout the entire state.
Alder Person Hirsch, and then I think it was Reeves, or what did I see over here? Maybe nobody. Alder Person Hirsch.
Does this trail go across 51?
Yes.
And if so, has there ever been any problems with them going across 51? Any accidents or any, nothing?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. I'm just thinking about safety here.
They post their traffic controls for the snowmobile trails, their stop signs on both sides, and things like that. So they do regulate, and we've not had any issues with the vehicle snowmobile accidents at all.
It doesn't ever snows anymore.
Yeah. Well, once in a while, we get fairly good snow for a while.
Alder Person Bartlett?
That's what I was going to ask. How many years was, were these open last year, Chief? Do you know? That was a handful.
I don't know. Maybe Jim could answer that question?
Mine up, Jim. And I also know Jim was at the DOT meeting the other night, too, when we brought up the safety for crossing 51, so they're looking at that in their plans as well, so...
Excellent, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jim. Excuse me. I'm Jim Blue, I'm with the Viking Snow Drifters. The club, one, the club's been in existence for 50 years. Two, we provide our own insurance, unlike any other organization in the state of Wisconsin. We pay our way. Three, there hasn't been any accidents so far. We have a county alliance, Dane County Alliance, which I was former president of, and it's a big connected picture. If there's issues, we all help one another crossing roads here and there. Currently, on the back burner right now, this new Robey Road intersection they're talking about, this roundabout, there's a possibility we'll get a tunnel, okay, to continue down the side of the road instead of any other way, but right now, it's just, we're talking about it. Six foot high, five foot wide, maybe if a bicycle person wants to walk their bike underneath Robey Road, that would certainly cover a lot of safety issues. And we're just talking about it. So for right now, we're good. We have the blessing of all the landowners, and we're asking for the blessing from the aldermen. Keep this going. It's just one small section of town, and we want to be able to go stop at the businesses. We need food, gasoline, and a place, if you're from elsewhere in the county, a place to sleep. Hotel.
Alder Person O'Connor?
Jim, once you get on the trail, how far can you go?
I went to St. Germain. It's 100, excuse me, it's 380 miles here from Stoughton, and we had snow. I couldn't get back. I had to trailer the rest of the way back somewhere around the delve.
All right. Any other questions? All right, any other questions? And just so you know, I did offer to let this topic go first, but Jim said he wanted to listen to the rest of the meeting, so he hasn't been sitting here all night waiting for this one.
Sorry about that.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming. All right. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That carries. R one ninety-one of two thousand and eighteen.
I'll take it.
Greg Johnson?
Well, I've got everything else.
All right, Alder Person Johnson.
He's on a roll.
He is on a roll. We'll see how far he gets with this one, though.
R one ninety-one, twenty-eighteen, lifting the council imposed moratorium on the blacksmith shop, and I would so move.
Second.
And there's a second on that.
Can I ask why?
Alder Person Johnson, go ahead.
Yes, 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 yes. This is something that the mayor and I have been...
Into the mic, please.
This is something that the mayor and I have been talking about for some time. Not the idea of removing the moratorium, but just the future of the blacksmith shop. And one of the things that came up, especially after the partial collapse of the roof, that we need to now remove the moratorium so that we're basically giving a free hand to the RDA to do what they need to do, when they need to do it. Because right now, basically, if something happened where they needed to make a move on this, they would have to come to us and ask us to remove that. So we're just basically saying, okay, you guys go ahead and do what you need to do. So that's the reason for this. It's not saying, go ahead and do this. It's just saying you have the right to go ahead and do what you need to do as far as the blacksmith shop is concerned.
And I would just add, you know, the moratorium was put on there way back when we started talking about Chapter seventy-eight with the downtown building, and we lifted the moratoriums or waived it on a number of other buildings and districts, and this is really the last remaining one. And I believe that when we get into December, it's possible we may only have one council meeting because of the holidays, and if something were to happen and the RDA needed to take action, we'd have to call a special meeting. So, you know, we're not really advocating it for one thing or another, other than to give the RDA the flexibility to do what they need to do, depending on the timing, if they need to do anything. But at this point, obviously, we're up for discussion, so I saw a few hands going up. Alder Person Hirsch, and then Borzma.
I guess I'm a little concerned about lifting the moratorium at this time when the RDA is trying to move forward, because even if something did happen with the building, RDA has no money. They would still have to come back here for approval, and at that time, you could lift the moratorium, too. So to say that you're lifting it so we have more freedom, I'm not completely convinced that that's the motivation. So I would like to keep it in place so the RDA can actually do what the council has directed them to do, which was to save the blacksmith shop and to see if there's a developer interested in it, and if we cannot find one, or if something happens, we do have to come back here, because we, one, would need your approval to take it down, and, two, we'd need some money to go through a demo anyway. So to lift it is kind of a mute point, because we'd still have to come back here anyway. So I'd like to keep it in place to give the RDA the security that we actually have still, the council's blessing, to go forward with what they had directed us to earlier this year, is to keep it, find a developer, and move forward with this development.
I have Alder Person Borzma, President Mieske, and then Alder Person Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. The first thing is that the, this is not obligating the RDA to do anything with it in terms of tearing it down. It doesn't seem like it's, it imposes any sort of rules on the RDA or any other person to tear that building down. I think it just gives the option to do that. I've seen the building, and, you know, I don't know. I think we're waiting on, and waiting and wondering on what's going to happen. And the other, the other thing is that this doesn't, it hasn't gone through any of our committees, and I just want to point that out. I think it's the only thing on tonight that hasn't gone through committee. But again, I think safety is an issue in this particular situation, and ability to act quickly if needed. So I would, you know, as long as it doesn't say they're going to do it, I don't think there's any big whoop on it, so.
Okay. President Mieske?
It's been a long process. You know, we put this moratorium on for a number of different reasons, to protect some buildings that needed to have more time for consideration. I understand what the logic is for this presentation. However, I'm agreeing with Alder Hirsch. Number one, as far as safety goes, that building is contained behind a fence. It is far away from the right-of-way, so if it fell in on itself, like a part of it did already, so be it. It's that much less to have to take down later. I think right now, this moratorium affords the RDA a level of cushion, so public opinion, one way or the other, doesn't drive something that should really be thought of more on an economic level by the RDA. They've gone, they're going through a process for, that they just talked about in their presentation. So let the developers who are interested, give them their shot. You know, we've gone twenty-six miles of a marathon. We've got three hundred and eighty-five feet to go, or eighty-five yards to go. Let them take the last three hundred and eighty-five yards. It's not going to make a difference. If we do get a, get a developer who's interested, then that's great. If we don't, and it's decided that building needs to come down, then, then we lift the moratorium, and the RDA will come to us and ask for money, and we will do what we need to do.
I have Alder Person Johnson, and then Bartlett.
I ditto what President Mieske just said, and Hirsch, we always honor, if you look on our website for Stoughton, what you see in the pictures, we honor our nature and our historical, and I would just like to reiterate that if we want to honor those things going forward, we have to preserve and create spaces to do that. Thank you.
Alder Person Bartlett?
First, I'd ask, Roger, since you're still here, does this hinder your activities whether or not, is the moratorium still in place?
The way I would look at this is that the RDA has not discussed this topic, and I think it would have been, you know, nice for us to have had a chance just to kind of go through this topic between ourselves. We do have a meeting tomorrow night. You heard me early on with Gary describe the new process that we'll be establishing to create a way in which we're inviting developers here, and we haven't even, I think I've got ideas, but we've not really, as a group, talked about how we're going to build a blacksmith shop into the RFEI. I think we will. In fact, I'm positive we will. So I think, as a matter of just information, it might have been more reasonable for us to have come to you with information, kind of like as you do with your subcommittees, with our recommendation on this, before you take an action tonight. So my suggestion would be, we appreciate the flexibility. We believe we've got enough flexibility, but I would have preferred to have had the chance to comment on this before it came up tonight. Thank you.
Okay. President Mieske?
Move to table.
Second. Okay, so there's a motion to table and a second, and I believe that's not debatable.
Until after the RDA has a chance to discuss.
Make a recommendation.
Okay. And that's not debatable, so all in favor of table, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That's table.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Reeves. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Move to adjourn. Thank you.